January twenty-second, twenty-first meeting of the Victoria Planning Commission. If anybody has any cell phones or anything, can you please silence them at this time? Our first order of business will be approval of meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Woods and a second by Ms. Wyatt on the approval of the December seventeen meeting minutes. Do I have a vote, please?
Aye.
Okay, so all ayes, no nays, it passes. Great. Second order of business, citizens communication. If anybody wishes to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, then please do so now. There's no one here. I mean, nobody that wishes to do that. So we will go on to development reviews. Mr. Charles, please.
Good evening, commissioners. First item on the agenda is Terra Vista subdivision, phases eight through twelve. This is a proposed preliminary plat of thirty-three point three nine four acres. Subject property is located on the west side of Glasgow Road, near the intersection of Ball Airport Road. The owner wishes to subdivide the property into eighteen blocks containing one hundred and thirty single-family residential lots. The property is owned by Landmark Residential Holdings, LTD. The proposed subdivision will provide two new local streets and the extension of three existing local streets, all with sixty feet of right-of-way.
Come on now, Mr. Charles, can I interrupt you a moment?
Sure.
Do we need these?
We actually had a computer malfunction, so they don't work.
It's not working, okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Koenig.
So...
Please go ahead.
Okay. So the property be, the proposed subdivision will provide two new local streets and the extension of three existing local streets, all with sixty feet of right-of-way. The proposed subdivision will be accessed from Brushy Creek, Buckskin Trail, and Vista Place. Water service will be provided by existing eight-inch water lines located in Terra Vista phases one through six. Sanitary sewer service will be provided by existing eight-inch sewer line located in Terra Vista phases one through six. Again, there will be extensions to Brushy Creek, Flint Rock Court, and Buckskin Trail, all with sixty feet of right-of-way. And then the creation of two new streets, Dripping Spring and Silver Spur, both with sixty feet of right-of-way. Storm drainage will be provided by the open drainage ditch that was constructed in conjunction with Terra Vista one and two, and is being extended in conjunction with five and the ranches of Terra Vista one. The ditch will be extended to the northeast following the northwest boundary line of Terra Vista eight, nine, and ten. Staff recommends approval of this preliminary plat as it is in compliance with the minimum requirements for single-family residential contained within the subdivision and development regulations. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Terra Vista subdivision phases eight through twelve. And I can answer any questions, and then the applicant is here as well.
Do you want to mention this email we got?
Sure. We received that email from one of a resident. I actually don't have one in front of me. If I could steal one from one of you.
Sure.
So I received this email a couple days ago. The resident said, unable to attend the planning commission public hearing on Thursday as a homeowner in the ranches of Terra Vista one, one-hundred percent support Landmark Holdings Limited and the development of Terra Vista subdivision phases eight, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen. I do ever feel it will be essential to expand slash widen Ball Airport Road between Glasgow and Mallett, as well as Mallett Drive between Briggs and Ball Airport Road in the future. The increased traffic from this residential development expansion will have an impact in traffic flow and safety.
I appreciate you making that. I was gonna ask, is there, are there any plans? There's a lot of traffic out there.
For all of those roads you mentioned?
Yes.
Ball Airport, you know, obviously it's just opened up, I guess, to the north, lets you go, get out on the bar that way. We'll see how the CIP discussion comes out this spring and April. City Council is scheduled to have a work session, and we'll see where the improvements on Mallett Drive land. They've been on and off the five-year CIP before. So it's, it's an area we know we need to do something on, but there may be some solutions that can be done to Mallett without having to do a full reconstruction four-lane boulevard. There may be some sort of interim solutions we can do. We do need to look at the, the traffic stacking up at the Mallett and Briggs four-way stop there as well. I think there's, there's been some discussion about whether or not that is close to meriting a traffic signal and whatnot, so we're looking at it.
I think I brought this up once before. In our decision-making, we're really not supposed to evaluate this, are we? Because I know at times we've, we've, in my opinion, we've approved things, and the streets are not adequate to handle that much traffic flow. Now, mind you, this is a development that's gonna happen over the course of several years.
Right, right.
And then, of course, you know, they still have to sell the homes and so forth.
Sure, yeah. That, it's, it's an area that you can express concern, but it's not a reason to not be able to approve the plat. It's not the developer's fault that some downstreet improvements need to be done by the city. It's just a fact, it's just a, it's just a growth issue out here.
Well, I know at one time, in our packages, they, we used to include a trip count or car count or something in some of these things, but I guess it's not appropriate in this case?
I don't know if it's applicable to this specific one, but yes, there are times when, tell you the traffic count on Mallett or something. It's not as high as you would think it is. Again, it's, it's high with, really extremely high during school and our, our rush quarters.
Okay.
But, but the, with the lack of shoulders and whatnot, it does, it does feel very tight and congested.
All right.
So, and it, it undoubtedly needs attention, it's just, it's a matter of allocating resources to it, and that's the city council's job.
I understand. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Charles?
I had one question. The creation of one street, we have Silver Spur that they're creating.
Dripping Spring and Silver Spur.
Silver Spur. We already have a spur drive? Is that an issue? I know I run into that, we have, when we have streets, similar street names in Victoria. I know I get return mail in my business and what have you, when they'll go to the, when there's real similar streets. I know we already had a spur, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's the ending, it's the, if we'd had two silver, whatever.
Silver Spur Drain, Drive, Silver Spur Lane, I understand. I'm just, just curious.
It's been reviewed by our addressing, not one, to make sure that there's not, something that's too close.
Not too close.
We do, we, there are times when something is proposed, and it's too close in spelling or sound to another street name, and we will...
Okay, I would just, I would just one concern ahead.
Anyone else? Any questions? Mr. Charles? Okay. Thank you.
This is, this is just a preliminary plat, correct?
Yes.
This is not one of those cases where we're just approving the preliminary plat to let them sit there and sit on it for a while? Or do we know, or is there, is there planned development? I mean, we've run into that before, where we do a preliminary plat, and then a year later we do another, or are they gonna get an automatic extension and all that stuff again?
Well, it can happen again. The preliminary plats are good for two years.
All right. I'm just curious if there is actually planned development.
Yeah, it doesn't guarantee that you won't see it change again, the developer could, could decide to change a lot size and lot configuration, and as development patterns change, but...
We see the housing trend starting to slow down quite a bit in Victoria.
Sure, the trend goes to big houses, then he'll make an adjustment. If we go to the smaller ones, he'll make an adjustment.
This was one of those cases where we're just trying to get a preliminary plat set for two years, type deal. Okay, I'll just have a question.
Anyone else?
I move approval of the preliminary plat.
Okay. Mr. Woods, you okay? Before we, before we, okay. We have a motion by Ms. Wyatt and a second by who? Ms. Herrera? What? Oh, sorry. Anybody wishing to make any comments? Ms. Lee Alley, care to say? No. Okay, we're good to go? All right, then, we can go ahead. We voted. Sorry, thank you, Julie. Ms. Wyatt made a motion, and we have a second by Ms. Herrera to approve the preliminary plat of Terra Vista Estates. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the ayes have it. So it passes.
Next on the agenda is Fox Creek subdivision, sections two through five. This is a proposed preliminary plat of thirty-point-three-six acres. Subject property is located near the intersection of Ben Jordan Street and Gallant Fox Drive. The owner wishes to subdivide the property into eleven blocks containing one hundred and thirty single-family residential lots and two duplex slash two-family residential lots. The property is owned by Palm Land Investments. The proposed subdivision will provide three new local streets and the extension of five existing local streets, all with sixty feet of right-of-way. The proposed subdivision will have direct access to Ben Jordan Street. Water service will be provided by an existing eight-inch water line located along Alder Drive, Secretaria Drive, and Lenora Drive, as well an existing twelve-inch water line located on Ben Jordan Street. Sanitary sewer service will be provided by an existing eight-inch sewer line along Lenora Drive and existing twelve-inch sanitary sewer main located on Ben Jordan Drive, or Ben Jordan Street. They will have Aldar Drive, Bexar Avenue, Lenora Drive, Secretaria Drive, and Seguin Avenue are all existing, and they'll have proposed local streets with sixty feet of right-of-way, as well as the creation of three new streets. And Alashiba Drive, Forgo Court, and Guyakoma Drive, all proposed local streets with sixty feet of right-of-way. Storm drainage will be provided by the open drainage ditch located northeast of the property. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as it is in compliance with the minimum requirements for single-family residential and duplex slash two-family residential contained within the subdivision and development regulations. And I can answer any questions, or the applicant is here as well.
You mentioned that stormwater will be handled by just a ditch on the northeast corner?
A drainage ditch, yes.
So everything's gonna drain to that, or it's gonna have...
There's a creek that runs by the side.
Yeah. It's a lot of surface water on concrete and roofs to be flowing through. Is there...
It's capacitive.
Okay, so there will be...
It's capacitive.
Okay.
Hey, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Charles? No? Vicki, okay? Any questions? All right. All right. We'll open it up for a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the commission on this particular issue? Fox Creek? Okay. That's a no, so, somebody, commission have any comments? Care to discuss this anymore? All right, do I have a motion from someone?
I move to approve.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Welder and a second by Mr. Caldwell to approve the preliminary plat on Fox Creek subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? No, so preliminary plat is approved. Next item.
Third item on the agenda is a final plat approval of D. Gonzalez subdivision number one, lot one, block one. It has a variance section twenty-one dash eighty-two A one, which requires a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. The subject property is located at twenty-five oh-five Black Street, near the intersection of Nova Avenue and Black Street. The property is legally described as being point one-one-five acre tract of land, situated in farm lot number three, block number three, range three, east below original four-lee grant to the town of Victoria, Victoria County, Texas. The property is being developed into one single-family residential lot. The variance will allow for the owner to waive the minimum six thousand square foot lot size requirement. This lot will be, water service will be provided by existing eight-inch water line off of Black Street. The sewer service will also be provided by an existing eight-inch sewer line off of Black Street. It'll be accessed via Black Street, and drainage will be in compliance with the master drainage plan for the city of Victoria. The city of Victoria Code of Ordinance, section twenty-one dash eighty-two A one, city code calls for a minimum of six thousand square foot lot size. Without variances, this tract of land would most likely remain undeveloped due to the size of the lot. Because this is a variance, it is required to meet the following criteria: that the granting of this variance will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to surrounding property; the granting of the variance is not based on a hardship which is self-imposed; the hardship is not based solely on the cost of complying with regulation; the granting of the variance will not have the effect of preventing the orderly development of other land in the area in accordance with provisions of this chapter; and there are special or unique circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved such that the strict application of these provisions of this chapter would deprive, deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the property. Staff recommends approval of this variance as, as the lot will most likely be unable to develop without a variance in existing tract of land, which would require the acquisition of additional land to be in compliance with the minimum requirements of the subdivision ordinance. If the planning commission recommends approval of the variance request described above, development services staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to the city council approval of the described variance request. If the variance request is not approved by city council, the plat will be considered denied as the variance is a condition of this approval. And I can answer any questions, and I do not believe the applicant is here, so...
All right, I have a question. I think, I know I've asked you this before. When, when a variance application is filed, doesn't the applicant have to address all the conditions for approval of the variance? Either I didn't get that page, or they didn't do it.
In the, I mean, they're, they're required to meet all of those criteria?
Yes, but they didn't address it. The letter from Mr. Bloom didn't address anything. So I was curious.
Looks, looks like there maybe there's a page from the application in here.
I think there's something missing.
I should have asked you that pre, previous...
Looks like something maybe didn't get scanned. There's, there's the variance application, the form itself is three or four pages, so there's, there's at least one page missing from here.
Okay, and then, we have two things to roll on, right? We have to roll on the variance first, and then the final, approval of the final plat, correct? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Charles? Go ahead, Vic.
Situations like this, for fresh memory, if we grant the variance, does that affect the size of the building they can put on there if they decide to develop it in the future?
If they can fit inside those building lines, that's the requirement.
It still has to meet the same building lines as if it were six thousand square foot?
Yeah, they're slightly closer together.
Yeah, they're in here.
I'd roll by it, and I don't see, if we don't approve it, it's never gonna get used for anything, 'cause it's not, it's really not that big of a lot, and it would be nice to see it getting used and, you know, kinda add something to the tax rolls.
We've approved these before in the past. What did you call them, shotgun lots or something like that?
Otter's lot.
Just from the original town site.
Alouie's lot.
This guy over here, man, he'll get you a hamburger as soon as the meeting's over.
They used to call them shotgun lots, because in the old days, they would tax by the, the frontage of the home, not the actual size of the home, just the frontage. That's why they would build a narrow home and deep. That's why they called them that. Yeah, that, and you could shoot down the hallway from one side to the other.
And I'll bring it up one more time. My only concern about when we get items like this on our agenda is that it's like, it's on the agenda, we're approving the variance, we're approving the plat, boom, it's done, and the only chance and opportunity that somebody has from the public to speak up against it, or even for it, is when it goes to council, if...
We need a public hearing after. There's a variance...
Yeah, we do the variance first and then the public hearing.
Right, but it all happens at the same meeting at the same time. That, that's my only concern about...
All the neighbors got notices and everything. I know people have notices, so, you know, they'd easily be here if they had a concern.
Yeah, for, for every variance, we require them to put a notice into the Victoria Advocate stating that they are indeed doing a variance, as well as sending out a public letter that we, that we provide to them, that they send out to all the people within a two-hundred foot radius.
Two hundred, I think y'all said, two or three hundred?
Oh, everybody in the area. I move approval of variance.
I second.
I third.
Wait, wait. Yeah, I guess, no, no, we did the variance first and then public hearing, okay. Sorry. Before we, anybody else have any more comments? I just wanna make sure, okay. All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Wyatt, and who seconded it?
I did. Mr. Koenig.
Mr. Koenig second. Do I have a...
Actually, the variance is on, if the public hearing's for the variance, the, if the variance is approved, then you deliver the final plat, and final plats do not have public hearing, public...
Preliminary.
So we need the public hearing before, or are you...
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay.
As long as it's not confusing for you, we're okay.
All right. Before we vote on this variance, we need to have a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the commission on this, on the variance request for twenty-five oh-five Black Street? Okay. There's nobody that wishes to do that. Now we can vote on the variance. We have a motion by Ms. Wyatt and a seconded, second by Mr. Koenig to approve the variance. Do I have a, what was it? A vote, let's vote. Is anybody, an a, excuse me, momentary brain fart. Is everybody okay with this?
All those in favor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No. The variance passes. Now we're voting on the final plat approval. We don't need a public hearing. So do I have a motion for approval of the final plat?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
By Mr. Spears.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wyatt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, so this, this issue is done. Next one.
Fourth item on the agenda is a variance, section twenty-one dash eighty-two A one and section twenty-one dash eighty-two A two of the city code, which requires a minimum lot width of fifty feet and a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. This is a final plat approval as well of original town site, re-subdivision number seventy-nine. This is a, the property is located at nine oh-four South Cameron, near the intersection of South Cameron Street and East Third Street. Property is being plotted into one single-family residential lot. The variance will allow for the owner to waive the minimum lot width requirement of fifty feet, as well as the minimum six thousand square foot lot size requirement. Property is currently, has a single-family residential property, and the owner is wishing to plot the property in order to sell it. For this property, water service is provided by an eight-inch existing water line off of South Cameron Street. Sewer service is provided by an existing eight-inch sewer line off of South Cameron Street. The property is accessed by South Cameron Street, and drainage will be in compliance with the master drainage plan for the city of Victoria. And the city of Victoria Code of Ordinance is section twenty-one dash eighty-two A one and section twenty-one dash eighty-two A two. City code calls for a minimum lot width of fifty feet and a minimum six thousand square foot lot size. The property already contains a single-family residential property. The variance is being requested in order for the owner to sell the property. Again, for the, for the variance to be approved, it needs to meet the following criteria: the grant to the variance will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to surrounding property; the grant to the variance is not based on a hardship which is self-imposed; the hardship is not based solely on the cost of complying with the regulation; the granting of the variance will not have effect preventing the orderly development of other land in the area in accordance with the provisions of this chapter; and there are special or unique circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved such that the strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the property. Staff recommends approval of the variance request as the lot already contains a single-family residential property, and the variance is needed by the owner to sell the property. If the planning commission recommends approval of the variance request described above, development staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to city council approval of the above described variance request. If the variance is not approved by city council, the plat will be considered denied as the variance is a condition of this approval. And I can answer any questions, and do not believe the applicant is here, so...
Question? I'm, I'm looking at the original lines, property lines, on the, on the satellite image we have. What exactly took place? I mean, does it, the original lot there, did they build over the line onto the neighbor's property, or, I mean...
Are you asking on the aerial?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's no telling what's happening there.
I mean, how did that get built? I'm, I'm looking at how it's laid out, the different lots. And if you're following the lot line from the property behind it, if you go straight through it, it seemed like those were all uniform lots.
Right.
So that residence that's built looks like it's straddling that property line. The original property line.
Yes, I see what you're talking about. I, you know, no telling, it's probably been that way for, for years.
Well, there is an error on the aerial map, it's off by about ten feet.
Yeah.
And I just, because it's the property, I'm gonna go down there and get a survey. So it's just a map error in that particular section of town, and it's just random that I know that.
And the way it looks, it looks like they, they built on both sides of the property line, the original property line.
Right, I see that. Yeah, I, it could, you can see that there's an old, there's an old bend, and there is an old road right-of-way through there that's been, maybe you don't know that's river right-of-way, but I know that's what that is. There's that, that swing or that swoop that's on the same aerial, aerial photo you're looking at, there's, there's an old bend and ri, river right-of-way through there, and...
Right.
That's what, all of that third street.
The right-of-way that came through there, but I'm looking at the area that's in red.
Yeah, let's see.
It looks like it straddles the original property line.
You can see a fence line that the property line doesn't match up. I think that's what Commissioner Spears was trying to point out, that, that, you know, that's a layer overlaid against the aerials, and it, they're not survey accurate in any way, shape, or form. And, and, you know, the develop, these houses, if you drive through the neighborhood, you can see predominantly developed, I guess, thirties, forties.
Well, a lot of those homes were just placed on there. If you see out there on the back, it lists the home as an improvement and nothing attached to the land or whatever.
Right, I understand.
How the law was, they bought some homes down.
I mean, how we're, how we're going from those two original lots down, now we're going to three in the same area. How does that affect the lot on either side of it? Does that make them non-compliant now?
If they can't prove through a deed, deed records showing that that was, they have a deed, and chose it was that and that configuration, then they might have to plat in the future as well.
I guess what I'm, I guess, if we, if we agree to this lot size, does that put the lot on either side of it now makes them non-compliant?
No, no.
No? It's like you're splitting them.
Well, just as a, just for my own information, what is the title issue?
Just the, the deed was, this lot was created in this configuration after we adopted the subdivision ordinance, so then it doesn't become a deed, a lot of record, and it must comply with the subdivision ornament, ordinance, which therefore means it must be platted, which is why we're here tonight.
But that doesn't affect a title policy?
No, it doesn't, no.
Because a title policy specifically accepts subdivision regulations.
Shouldn't have...
But the buyer must want it platted for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, it says a title was ran, run, and a platting issue's come to their attention, unless they plan to tear down and try to rebuild or something. I, I guess, I don't understand what title issue would be involved.
That may be between them and their title company.
It's entirely possible that one, two, or even three of these lots were all owned by the same family back in the day.
That they've deeded them out.
And they just built on it, and then broke it up and needed it out after a death, or something like that.
Anybody have any more questions of Mr. Charles?
Existing building meets the setback on the one side, or is that part of their variance? I wasn't quite clear on that.
Don't look like it. Looked like it encroaches on the property line.
I mean, is that, I mean, the reason why I ask a question, is that something we need to address as part of the variance?
No. We're looking at the plat, it doesn't look like it shows any encroachments on the plat, but if it...
Doesn't show the building.
If the, right, it doesn't show the building, but it, so it also doesn't show any, there are any encroachments over the building line. If there were, there's a simple note that we put on the plat that just says, existing buildings are exempt from the building lines, any future improvements must comply with the building lines. So, one way or the other, they're okay, as long as the improvements aren't encroaching the property line.
They were built before the creation of building lines.
Right. I just didn't know how that affects us going forward, and Jared just answered it. We put a note on there saying that if that existing building is ever, if something new put in its place, they would then have to meet.
Has to meet the building lines.
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay. So no more questions on this. I learned from the previous one, we have to have a public hearing on the variance. At this time, does anybody wish to address the commission on this particular item, on this variance request? There is no one, so we close that issue, public hearing issue, and do I have a motion before the commission to approve the variance?
You have to approve the variance first or the plat first?
Just the variance.
The variance.
I move to approve the variance.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Caldwell to approve the variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. All those, excuse me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
What? We have one no? So we have one no by Ms. Wyatt. The variance, excuse me, the variance is approved. Second item is approval of the final plat. And.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Woods. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Welder. All those in favor of approving the final plat, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the final plat is approved.
Next item on the agenda is the monthly development report. So this month, we received three minor plats: King Fuels, NS subdivision, original town site, re-subnumber 78, and Pilot Flying J subdivision. We received four major plats, and that, those are original town site, re-subnumber 79, Tera V subdivision, phases eight through 12, Fox Creek, section two and five, and D. Gonzalez subdivision number one, as well as a site plan for a splash pad for the city of Victoria. Three items went to city council. The text amendment for off-street storage and display, this was approved by city council. A driveway variance for Stubfield subdivision, re-subdivision number one, which has been approved by city council, and a variance for 4304 Hanselman Road, which has also been approved.
It's been approved?
As of, as of now, they've been approved, but as of when this was printed, they were pending.
Okay.
For the monthly activity report, we did nine single-family residential houses. This is slightly down from 14 from last year at this time. There was 119 plans taken in total for $15,502,531, which is more than it was the previous year, as well for permits. We took in $34,531, which is slightly down from what it was this time the previous year, which was $44,417. If you have any questions.
Questions? All right. Any items anybody wishes to discuss? No?
As a reminder, seeing as I know we have our semi-annual turnover in staff, hi. Yeah. In the future, when we, like with any of the large plats that we're talking about that come back for secondary and final approval, if we could have in our notes when the first plat was approved, just so we can go back in our notes and look and reference anything we might have before we make our final decisions on that, that'd be great.
On Monday, February 8th, we have our joint meeting, which is a joint meeting between the comprehensive plan advisory committee, planning commission, and city council to finalize our comprehensive plan. We also have on Thursday, February 4th, a big public meeting that we hope you can all attend at the community center, and I will be sending out emails to remind everyone and drafts to, or links to the draft plan that's already posted on our website for y'all to review.
We have seen a lot of shares on Facebook when everything was coming up, and is it ticketed?
No.